This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent out to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 3rd, 2019, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 3rd, 2019, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphone, and assistive listening devices are available. Amy, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Brill-Mittler.
Here.
Councilman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Well, many of you may be familiar with someone who lives in town and is a frequent visitor to our council chambers and offers some questions at public hearing time. At this point, I'd like to introduce you, if you don't know him, to Mr. Herbert Gross, for whom, who we are honoring this evening for his service to our country. Mr. Gross and the members of our alliance, could you please come forward? The Veterans Alliance.
Good evening.
Good evening. We always love seeing your face here in the evenings. I never know exactly what you're going to ask me, but I'm always pleased to have you here, and we've never had the opportunity before to honor you for your service. So, my fellow members of the governing body and I would like to read a proclamation in your honor today.
Thank you.
Whereas Herbert Gross, a longtime resident of Highland Park, was born in New York City and spent his youth in the Bronx and then in New Brunswick, New Jersey; and whereas Herbert Gross graduated from Rutgers University with a degree in business administration in 1949; and whereas Herbert Gross served as a member of the United States Marine Corps during the Korean War from 1951 to 1953, and was called upon in the reserves to serve in the Vietnam War, which he did in 1967 to 1968; and whereas Herbert Gross is very proud to have served in the United States Marine Corps; and whereas Herbert Gross worked in the trucking industry for 41 years at Eastern Express and Carolina Freight Carriers in Edison, New Jersey; and whereas Herbert Gross worked in management for Carolina Freight Carriers from where he was presented with a service award upon his retirement; and whereas Herbert Gross knew and was friends with Navy veteran Herbert Tansman, who served as mayor of Highland Park from 1966 to 1969; and United States Marine Corps veteran Harold Hesey Berman, who served as mayor of Highland Park from 1978 to 1979, and again, from 1984 to 1987; and whereas Herbert Gross regularly attends Highland Park Borough Council meetings to speak out on issues affecting the Highland Park community, and especially about veterans' affairs, in which he is very active; and whereas Herbert Gross has advocated for Highland Park residents to visit and speak with veterans, who are former residents of Highland Park, Edison, and New Brunswick, who now live at the Menlo Park Veterans Memorial Home and Roosevelt Care Center in Edison, to thank them for the service to the United States of America; and whereas Herbert Gross is currently member of the American Legion 1000 in Trenton, New Jersey, and VFW Post 370 in New Brunswick, New Jersey, now, therefore I, Gail Brill-Mittler, mayor of the borough of Highland Park, do hereby proclaim Herbert Gross a distinguished resident. Thank you, sir, for your service. February 5th, 2019, and February 19th, 2019, as distributed?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll go into our borough council reports now, and Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, I'm going to start on your end.
Okay. I wasn't here last meeting, so bear with me, I have a bit much today. In regards to senior services, we have free eye screenings available at the Community Center on Thursday, May 30th, starting at 9:30 a.m., and you must call or stop by the office to register, and this is open to the public, ages three and up, absolutely free. The municipal alliance meeting will take place June 4th, 11:15, at the Community Center, and Council on Asian will take place the same day, later in the day, at 2:30 p.m. at the Community Center as well. Please save the date for our senior prom, June 18th, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and also save the date for our cruise trip, Wednesday, July 24th. Enjoy a beautiful day sailing the Hudson, $65 per person, and includes gourmet lunch buffet, desserts, and dancing. Make sure you check out the Facebook page for upcoming activities, events, and trips. In recreation, our summer camps will begin July 8th, and this year, again, we did add on early care, starting at 7:00 a.m. this year, this is the first time, you guys requested it last year, so, we, there you go, you have it. So, please make sure you guys sign up for it, stop by the Community Center for more details. Also, the Highland Park Youth Company Theater, the fireworks program that you will see before the actual show. Rehearsals begin May 30th, and it's selections from The Greatest Showman. Summer tennis lessons, tennis lessons for youth and adults, we have eight sessions. Registration deadline is June 19th. Our Memorial Day Parade will begin at 11:00 a.m. on, actual Memorial Day, I didn't write that down, actually, next Monday, May 27th. 11:00 a.m. in New Brunswick at the Monument Square. From there, we'll proceed up Raritan Avenue to the Do Boy Monument in Highland Park. And the Highland Park Municipal Band has their Free Spring Concerts, Sunday, June 2nd, 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., and refreshments will be served following the concert. And also save the date, we're already talking about 4th of July, fireworks in the park, July 3rd, and the rain date is scheduled for July 7th. With the Arts Commission, they're currently exploring options and ideas for the auto mechanic shop that's on Raritan Avenue, Bergen Auto, to do something with the, I guess, the outside of the building, business administrator. Terry Hovere had asked the Arts Commission to look in, maybe taking care, maybe doing something with the outside of the building, since Bergen Auto, it's now owned by the actual borough. The Band-Aid bench will be ready mid-June, it was pushed back to June because of May with the rain that's been going on, so we weren't able to actually finish and tile it. Open Studios took place this past weekend with 14 artists participating in eight homes, and Access Granite is moving along, we have 12 participants and two photographers, lots of excitement all around, and we're working on helping Sustainable HP come up with the arts inventory, and we have a new member that joined, that is going to be joining our commission, but she's been attending many meetings, a high school student and arts activist, Jessica Wu, and the owner of the building that houses Roberts Floral, has given approval for the, for a permit for the mural to be painted on the side of the building. We're currently in negotiations with the local murist to do the art piece. The Historic Commission, it's working with Edison Township to celebrate the 150 anniversary of Raritan Township. We have, we're gonna schedule a meeting with myself, the mayor, and some representatives from the Arts Commission. If you don't know, about 150 years ago, Highland Park was part of Raritan Township, and Matutian was also a part of them, so it was Edison, Matutian, and Highland Park. Also, they've been working on the Mayors of Highland Park blog, that website is mayorshighlandpark-home.blog. If you have a chance, check out some of the cool items that they have uploaded there about our mayors, and that we had a total of 33 mayors since the beginning of Highland Park. They also have, which I wanted to mention in their arts archive, in their collective, their historical collection, they have a wire recording media that, it's actually a wire, that was used in the 1940s, and they're looking for someone to actually convert it so we can actually see what's on the, on the wire recording, so it's very interesting, and it's, they anticipate that it's very sensitive information, it's very cool. I, I thought it was a broken cable that was in the room, and they were like, no, don't touch it, so it was really interesting. And it's also been confirmed that, starting in September, the Commission will meet the third Thursday of the month at 7:00 p.m. in Borough Hall. Until then, the next meeting will take place June 9th, 1:15 p.m. at the Highland Park Library. On May 13th, I joined Congressman Pallone for a press conference in Highland Park at the Union Local Number 32, installators and allied workers to push for the federal government to ban asbestos. You would think in 2019, this would be like a no-brainer, but to my knowledge, Congressman Pallone let me know that the federal government is still letting asbestos happen at construction sites throughout the state and throughout the country. Last but not least, May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. It celebrates the culture, traditions, and history of American Asians and Pacific Islanders in the United States. I had the opportunity to celebrate with the governor and the First Lady, along with other Asians throughout the state. This year, for the first time, Highland Park will join the celebration. This Thursday, May 23rd, 7:00 p.m. here in Council Chambers, I will moderate a panel of Asian Americans with the theme, "The Journey, The Journey to the American Dream," with special guests Angela Yee from Power 105.1. Other panelists include First South Asian, Middlesex County Freeholder, Policy Director for First Lady Tammy Murphy, Chief IT Officer, and President of the Chinese Culture Club at the Highland Park High School. And we're gonna close out the month with a free screening of Crazy Rich Asians on May 31st, 7:00 p.m., right here in the Council Chambers as well. I will bring my popcorn machine, and former Councilman Hirsch will keep your popcorn boxes full, and we'll have a great time, and I look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, could you explain to everyone what Access Granite is?
Um, do I have that on here?
You mentioned it in your.
Yes. So, Access Granted is, with the Arts, was a grant that the Arts Commission applied for through the county. The grant will actually follow disabled or handicapped individuals in town, and it's actually like a, through photographs, they're gonna tell their stories, show their day-to-day challenges, and also their, their ups and their downs throughout the days. So, they're working with two photographers, and they have 12 participants right now. I'm looking forward to seeing this project come to life, and actually, it's one of our commissioners that's on the Arts Commission that's actually chairing this project, and she's really been doing an awesome job on it, and more details are on the HP Arts Commission Facebook page.
Thank you very much. Councilman Hale, do you have a report?
I do, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to report that the Highland Park Food Pantry has partnered with Middlesex County and students at the Rutgers University Advanced Community Development Program to develop a series of information flyers and outreach efforts designed to help educate the public on food product dating, safety, and consumption. There seems often that there can be some confusion of the meaning of the dates applied to food products, and that has resulted in many consumers discarding perfectly safe and wholesome food. By understanding food product dating better, we can decrease the amount of food waste in our community. I placed some flyers up front that have some of the information on this, this will be placed on the media outlets for the borough shortly. People who are interested in, in learning more about this are encouraged to visit the USDA website at www.fsis.usda.gov. In addition, there will be a survey and a flyer that will be circulated in an attempt to get a better understanding of how people see and understand issues around food dating and food safety. So, thank you to the Highland Park Food Pantry for that. Next up, the Highland Park Human Relations Commission would like to remind everybody that June is Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month, and that on Monday, June 3rd, there will be an LGBT Pride Month flag raising at the Community Center from 9:30 to 10:30. We hope that all residents will come and attend this important commemoration of the 1969 Stonewall uprising and the lasting impact that members of this community have had historically, locally, nationally, and internationally. So, that's again, Monday, June 3rd, at the Community Center at 9:30. Lastly, I wanted to report briefly on a meeting that was held between Chief Abrams, Captain Curbelo, our police mentor Chief Spruill, and the Chairs of the Highland Park Equity Commission, Justin Burton and Lucinda Holt. I wanted to thank everybody who was able to attend that, and at the meeting, it was focused on issues of how the Highland Park Equity Commission can assist and be part of the process of developing benchmarks for the new police leadership team, specifically focused on, on three areas that are quite important, ways of expanding training opportunities for all police officers, and de-escalation, implicit bias, and procedural justice, and ways of reporting to the public how those trainings have been planned and how those trainings have been carried out. Second, on ways that data, different types of data collection can be improved, some of those are technological issues, some of those are procedural issues, but again, all of those, reporting of, of that is something that is an important part of the, the process that we are undergoing, and that the Equity Commission will be a part of. And then lastly, ways of improving and explaining an existing anonymous complaint system. One of the things that, that the Equity Commission has been interested in and working on is developing a system where anonymous complaints can be delivered to the police department. Currently, anyone who has a complaint against a police officer, or has any complaint, can drop those anonymously to the police department, and those will automatically sort of start a process. There is a lot of work to do on how to, how to make that process a little bit more transparent, and the group that we were talking about and working with sort of got a good start on that, so I just wanted to report on, on that progress with the Highland Park Equity Commission. And then lastly, I just wanted to add, I know we'll probably talk about it shortly, that on Wednesday, May 22nd, at 7 o'clock, is Volunteer Appreciation Night. I, I can't imagine a borough running without the, the number of volunteers that we have, and, and so I just wanted to add my voice to all of, and thank all of the people who give their time and their effort to volunteer to help make Highland Park great, so I wanted to add my voice to that. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wolkowitz, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, good news, congratulations to us for at least the third year in a row. Highland Park Borough has received Gold Level Status from Safe Routes to School. Also, Irving School and Bartle have also received Gold Status again, and to round it out, our middle school for the first time has received Gold Net, Gold Level Certification from Safe Routes to School, so it's been a clean sweep throughout the borough. Special thanks to Bill Neary of, and Chris Gonda from Keep Middlesex Moving, they are our county's nonprofit transit and mobility organization. And special congratulations to our Borough Administrator, Terry Hovere, who has been appointed to the Board of Keep Middlesex Moving. That's great news, thanks, Terry. A few other things, please. This past Thursday and Saturday, our Main Street held their planting, their annual planting days for the spring, and by 11 o'clock on Saturday, the plants were practically all given out. Another year of great success, so much enthusiasm, so many volunteers came out. It's a big, fun event, very family-friendly, so thank you to everyone who came out and participated, and to Ira again for, for this year, great plants, a beautiful time, thank you. And tonight, we, the Council will be approving a resolution authorizing the execution of a letter of agreement for participation in the Main Street, New Jersey program. Now, this again is new from our governor, and this will allow our Main Street to be eligible for Main Street, New Jersey awards for physical improvements and operational support. This is long overdue, we haven't had this kind of support from the state in several years, so we're delighted about this, and I can tell you that there's talk right now of, of going out for grant monies to improve the location of the farmer's market right now, to, to make it more attractive in general all week long, it'll, it'll look nicer, and we hope it'll have a good impact on not only our farmer's market, but for all the great events that our Main Street puts on there. Also, ah, our farmer's market, we're going to have a very berry spring. On May 31, we are having our Berry Fest. The mayor is going to be one of our judges to, to taste test berry pies, we're looking for volunteers to bake for us, please contact Main Street HP and let us know if you'd like to bake for us. Thank you, Mayor, for taking that on.
Oh, I am looking forward to it.
And, again, the farmer's market is open, this year it began the first weekend in May and runs through December, and that's every Friday from 11 to 5:30. And then in, on these very special days, it's open till, I'm sorry, it's open special till 6:30 on those very special days. And a couple of other things from Main Street, on June 1, we have our first outdoor movie theater, Dragon Slayer, and also, starting in June, on Friday's Music on the Corners. So, thank you, and please come out and, and join us to celebrate.
Thank you, and I want to tell you that, for some reason, it seemed like this year's planting day was even more exciting than it's been in the past. I had a chance to participate this year, and there were so many children signed up to plant their own planters, it was really a lot of fun to go around town and watch the children planting with their parents or by themselves, having disputes about who's going to plant which plant in which corner, following the maps and diagrams, it was really wonderful. So, please pass the, my thanks on to everyone at Main Street. Did I see Javier here before? And that's the gentleman that helped coordinate the whole program. Thank you, Javier.
Thank you, and also Jim Nichols is in the audience, he chairs our Design Committee.
Yes, thank you, Jim. It was really great. Okay. Councilwoman Foster-Dublin, do you have a report today?
Yes, I do. Just want to give a quick update about the teen center. We opened last year, and the, the numbers of teens that are, have been attending the center has grown quite tremendously, there's tons and tons of programming over there, and the facility is constantly being used. Just a quick update, this June, they will be holding, the date to be announced, they will be holding a graduation ceremony for the young people who have used the facility and will be going off to college, so they don't want to feel left out, not just graduating from the high school, there'll be a graduation ceremony from our youth center that the teens have participated in this year, so all those who are going off to college or elsewhere, they're, they're gonna have a special ceremony for them, and Ashton will provide more information, that's gonna be next month, so I will share that with you as soon as I have those dates. On Mondays, they have, Panera Bread is, has provided meals on Monday afternoons for the kids, and they have a tutor that comes in and provide tutoring session, and along with that, they get a nice hot meal from Panera Bread, so, thanks so much to Panera Bread for helping us out. On July 13th, the students will visit the African-American Museum in Washington, D.C., the Jewish Museum, and on a later date, the American Indian Museum, and in August, they'll be, also be going for a day of fun at Duanee Park. They are gonna be having a wonderful time with the activity that, that's been planned for the center. On Tuesdays, as a matter of fact, tonight, today, they had a resume building and a job, a job experience exercise classes, so on Tuesday, they go for resume building and a mock, a mock trial, I should say, for job interview process, so someone comes and sits with them, and they go through reviewing their resumes and get the whole mock of sitting in an interview and see what an interview process is like. And as I reported last month, that the, they will be applying for jobs at, at the youth center through, oh my god, through the county, so the county's gonna be offering some summer jobs, so they'll have an opportunity for the interview and to go in and make sure that they get summer jobs this summer. The youth center, they're gonna be having a planting day, and if you've been to the facility, you'll notice that they have not had plants put in, but now that the weather's clear and we've worked with Rutgers, and they have provided us some, some renderings and some drawings, I mean, there's actually a plant, they're gonna be having a planting day. For more information, you can call Ashton and For more information, you can call Ashton, and he will provide you with when and where the planting will be. They're also seeking to put a mural on the side of the building. Because as you drive up the avenue, you will see that there's, they don't want a sign, but what they want to do is to tell the story of who uses that building. So they're looking for artists that will help them to create a mural on the side of the building. And I don't want to say what it's going to look like, because they don't want me to do that, but it's going to be really interesting when you drive up. You will definitely know it's a youth center. So they want each participant of the center want to leave their own mark on the building. So that's going to be coming. So they're looking for sponsors, for not only teachers, but for supplies and to really make this mural happen on the side of the building. On Monday Memorial Day, our festivities actually starts at 8:30 a.m., where we lay wreaths for those who we have lost here in Highland Park. We start at the police department, then the firehouse, and then the different areas in Highland Park, where people who have served our community have lost their lives. And we do a dedication and a remembrance of those persons. So on Monday Memorial Day, 8:30, please come out if you can and support. I know it's early, but it's well worth it. In addition to congratulating Mr., to congratulating Mr. Gross for his dedication, his service to our country, he has been a strong advocate throughout the years of talking about the services that the veterans have provided to us, and to remind us every council meeting that freedom isn't really free, because somebody paid for it. And with that said, my cousin has just retired from the Army as a sergeant, and she has served in Afghanistan. And she has given me the flag that has flown in Afghanistan. So this Memorial Day, I'm dedicating the flag to be flown here at our doughboy in Highland Park. So Mr. Gross, thank you for constantly reminding us that the price of freedom isn't free, and we have a debt that we cannot pay to our service members. With that said, last but not least, June is Designated Caribbean American Heritage Month. And with that, we're going to be doing some Caribbean, we're going to raise our flag, the Caribbean flag, which is called Caricom, that represents the Caribbean, all 18 states in the Caribbean. So look forward to that. I'll make an announcement as that is, as we move forward with our plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fine, do you have a report?
I do not have a report, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Council President, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Susie's raising her hand.
I just have one more thing. I apologize. Special shout-out thanks to Lieutenant Gary Pannacella for putting up the new pedestrian crossing signs.
Okay, thanks. Now, Council President, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. I'd also like to extend my congratulations to Mr. Gross, who's a neighbor of mine. We frequently talk on the street, and I've given him a ride in the old car a couple of times, but I am especially proud since my oldest son is a Marine. With regard to public works, the one-man new refuse truck program is scheduled right now to be ready by mid-July, we hope. The ship date for the toders has been confirmed for about two weeks from now, and once they arrive, the DPW staff will start assembling and distributing them. We anticipate having them distributed by mid to late July and being able to start actually using the truck then. We think that a summer start may be a little light, because people may be away, but that'll be able to allow us to be able to evaluate tonnage and perhaps fine-tune the route as well. The DPW crews are hard at work now that the rains seem to have let up a little bit on landscaping borough properties. They've placed playground mulch at Carsey and Felton, and catching up on spring maintenance around all the buildings. They've also been busy installing new LED outdoor fixtures on all borough buildings and facilities. As you've heard also here at meetings, we're participating in PSENG's program to finance replacement of all interior lights with LED programs, and hopefully that'll start as well. Good news to everyone, although I'm sure everybody will have preference. The DPW pothole list is together, and the crews will be starting the patching now that, again, weather permitting, now that the rains seem to have let up and the roads have dried a little bit, including penetrations down into the broken surface. And as you notice, the new and refurbished road striping machines are now at work doing all the crosswalks. I noticed that they were doing the Cleveland at River Road even late this afternoon, after 5:00. And they're starting primarily with all of the safe routes to school crossings to make sure the crosswalks are improved and nice and bright. The Environmental Commission is reviewing the comments that the Planning Board had on the electric vehicle ordinances that we're discussing regarding placement of charging stations and amendments to zoning to permit charging stations and related electric vehicle provisions. The next meeting is June 5 at 7:30 at the Environmental Center. Regarding Sustainable Highland Park, unfortunately, you all know Earth Day was canceled due to the threat of bad weather and the fact that it was very cold and damp, even though the rain mostly held off. Sustainable Highland Park won a partners' grant to sponsor the posters for Earth Day for local artists, and there were a number of submissions. It's very interesting. They will be available, and they'll be distributed, even though that Earth Day didn't happen. And I want to thank Chairperson Tina Weisshaus and volunteer Irene Riegner for all the help in designing the project, getting the booths set up, coordinating the submissions. The Shade Tree Advisory Committee, their purchase of 50 dogwoods to be available to residents at Earth Day was obviously rained out again as well. However, in one of the interesting volunteer and cooperation programs that are beginning to catch fire in Highland Park, STACK cooperated with Main Street to distribute them at the farmer's market. So we're tying, all the volunteers are beginning to see where their opportunities are with each other and making more and more things happen. All of the trees were designated, people took home applications for street trees, and STACK was able to not only just start distributing their brochure on the Emerald Dashboard problem, explaining how it is that you spot them and so on, but to distribute that and also make themselves known. That's an interesting thing that's happening. It's happening this year more than it ever has, the volunteer groups cooperating with each other. Sustainable Highland Park, the Arts Collective, and the Arts Community, the Arts Collective being private. One of the more interesting public art projects that's happening doesn't even have anything to do with the borough. It has actually caught fire. The Lafayette Condos Board approved an outdoor sculpture that was designed by a certain local artist who has graced us with her presence in New Pollard. And that has nothing to do with the borough. On their own, they decided to put this project. It's a substantial investment, and I'm looking forward to seeing it. And it's public art on a private sector, because they like the idea, and Highland Park is encouraging it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mayor, could I just add to what Councilman George said? The collaboration of STACK Shade Tree Commission, giving out the plants and sharing the information at the farmer's market. We want to have the farmer's market be more of an area where people can come and gather information and exchange information. So part of what we're looking at in the near future is to build out that area a little bit more and have the borough have a presence there on a regular basis, where people can come ask questions or various committees can showcase some of their stuff.
That's a good idea.
And tying in exactly with that is what Councilman Hill was talking about, the new food waste movement. Especially, I saw, I was listening to a special on NPR specifically about the, most farmer's markets try to donate to food kitchens and such, but the amount of food waste going on to try and use it, I think it's going to be a great opportunity to tie in.
Okay. Okay, Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Just a couple of items, kind of on the same kind of positive note along the lines of where Councilman George was. I just wanted to report, because I haven't mentioned in a while, although work has been very much fevered pace. We are up for recertification with sustainable jersey. The borough has gotten Silver Certification the last few times. We come in every three years. And myself, Emma, in my office in particular, has been coordinating all the good work from our boards and commissions and committees and our departments in the borough to try to pull together a really strong package for recertification. So that deadline's coming up in June. We'll get a couple of bites at the apple in terms of finalizing our submission, but the hope is we'll come home with a really nice prize at the League of Municipalities Conference in November. So we'll keep you posted as that progresses. I know we're going to do well, it's just, you know, how well are we going to do? So that's been a really exciting project.
Well, you know my target is gold.
Well, gold ain't happening this year, Mayor, but we'll talk about that another time. So, nobody's got gold yet. So, a couple other things, and Councilwoman Welkowitz, sorry if you intended to say this, and I'm stepping, but I just wanted to mention, we have kind of two initiatives, one kind of wrapping up and one getting kicked off sometime in June. We're scheduling these meetings now, but I want to put them on everybody's radar. We've been fast at work with that DOT Bicycle and Pedestrian Planning Initiative that's been ongoing for almost a year now. And we'll be scheduling a community meeting to roll out some of those recommendations in the near future. That contract's wrapping up, that came to us through the state of New Jersey. So that's something to keep an eye out for, more to come. And at the same time, while we're kind of wrapping up those recommendations, we'll be looking to kick off our master plan reexamination process in a more public way. We've been meeting more as a subcommittee of the Planning Board to date. And so please keep your eye out for those. There'll be an initial kickoff, as well as another opportunity for community engagement after the summer. So just wanted to put that out there, just because I know we've been working on it, but maybe not mentioned it.
Will we have any meetings in June for these?
That's for both, yes.
Okay, good.
And part of the big juggle that's underway is how to possibly schedule all the meetings that need to be scheduled before summer really hits in earnest. So that's what we're doing now. So please keep an eye, you know, we'll promote them in our usual ways, but please keep an eye out for those opportunities. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, great. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, but you will talk with us a little bit later about some of the things coming up on the agenda.
Certainly.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I have a few things. The borough has received several grants over the last couple of weeks, and I want to iterate some of them for you. I'm really excited about the Department of Transportation Grant this year. Last year, I think we received something like $280,000-something thousand. And this year, we received $596,000, and that is to fund road repairs throughout town. So I'm really happy to report that. And Councilman George mentioned the pothole repair list. What he didn't tell you is that it's three typewritten pages long. So we will be getting out there. Hopefully, the rain will stop for enough time to let us get the trucks out moving, and you can expect to see the potholes diminish or get level. Additionally, we received a $50,000 grant from the Community Development Block Grant Program of Middlesex County. And these expenses are going to be covered from the construction of the teen center, Zone 6. So I'm really excited and happy to let you know that the teen center now is being, the construction is being covered in part by the grant. Additionally, as you may or may not remember, three years ago, we had a tragedy in Highland Park in an area of town called, what I call, Upper Raridan, when a young child walking on the sidewalk was hit by something that a car struck, and he lost his life. Since that time, I have been working with the Department of Transportation to get more safety features put into that stretch of road. We've been looking at various things. I've told you time and again, working with the state takes quite a while. With the change in administration, we've seen a ramp up in the activity to help us get to traffic calming measures in that part of the town. It's the part where, as you know, in downtown Highland Park, we have one lane going in each way. As you get further up in town on Raridan, it breaks into two lanes going in each way. And the speed limit was higher, was just recently reduced down to 35 miles per hour as a result of this. However, we have new people at the DOT with the new administration, and our Senator Pat Deignan is now the Chair of the Department of Transportation Committee at the Senate, and he has been very helpful in getting the department to come and meet with us and put some plans together. And I'm happy to say that some of the electrical work for some of the changes up there has already begun, and we will be looking at temporary measures put in for the next few years until the final road diet can be completed, hopefully within the next five years. But the temporary measures are a start, and they will be left up there when the road diet occurs. So it's kind of a way to start training the people who use the highway over there to start slowing down. And I'm really happy to see that we're actually seeing some progress there after three years. As you know, we've hired the services of Ms. Elizabeth Williams Riley, who is the head of the American Conference on Diversity, to put together a study or a program for our residents in terms of diversity and implicit and inherent bias. We are committed to this program. She has asked that we put a task force together of community leaders to help her understand what the problems are. We've sent out invitations to 20 of our community leaders to help us start this group, and we've heard positive responses so far from 10. And we're hoping to be able to get this group together, starting in June, to start working towards what we can do as a community moving forward. I had the opportunity last week to visit one of our newest restaurants in town, The Sweet Shop. Has anybody been there yet?
Yes.
Great. So it's more than just a sweet shop. First of all, you must know they have New York cheesecakes. So for those of you who are displaced New Yorkers, you can get quality New York cheesecake in Highland Park. Additionally, they've got soups. It's a family-run business, and I'm wishing them the best of luck in Highland Park and encouraging you all to go out there and visit. This is just the last in a, of seven new businesses that have opened in Highland Park over the last few months. They include The Blue Horse, China Lee, Comic Sanctuary, Kybeal's Cafe, The Martial Arts Studio, and Mary, the new Venezuelan restaurant in town, also a gem. I want to thank Main Street and all of the volunteers there for their active commitment to keeping our downtown vibrant and the stores filled. So Javier and Jim, thank you once again for all your hard work. We did mention, somebody did mention the LGBTQ flag raising. Thank you, Stephanie. We've been working closely with the Pride Center on this annual event. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Matt.
No worries. It's all good.
Thank you, Matt.
No problem.
And the Pride Center has been very active in this program with us every year. This year, David Rogoff is working with me on this, and he wants to add something to the program, so we'll finalize that as we get closer. Again, Volunteer Appreciation Night is coming up tomorrow night. Thank you, Councilwoman Welkowitz, for mentioning that before. It was you.
Stephanie. It was, no. It was Matt.
It was you. I know it was you.
It was Matt.
That's okay. Let's just get the mention out there as much as we can. Doesn't matter.
And so, this year, I'm proud to announce that this year's Volunteer of the Year Award is going to Roberta Cressel from the Library Board for her activities with Daisy, her dog, her pet, who works with children and seniors. And she's had, been doing this program now, oh, I don't know exactly how many years, but for quite some time. And it's a wonderful program, and we thank her and the library for making it available to all our residents. Finally, talking about projects that have been in the works. Finally, talking about projects that have been in the works for a while. I have been meeting lately with Rutgers University and the city of New Brunswick. We've revived the requests that I've made over the years for the Rutgers Shuttle, or Rutgers Bus. So I am actually, we are having serious meetings to discuss changing the bus route to include Highland Park. So all of Highland Park's Rutgers residents, keep your fingers crossed that this will happen in our lifetime. It's now time for our public discussion. I would like to remind everyone that this is our first session, which means we have a total of 15 minutes. Each person is allowed three minutes, so that would be five of you for three minutes. And so I'm going to ask the Borough Administrator to keep time for us, so we're fair to everyone. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Herb Gross, and I live at Adelaide Gardens. First, I would like to say thank you to the mayor and councillor, and all the members of the council here for their hard work that they've done throughout the year. I think everyone in this room knows that it is not an easy task for all these ladies and gentlemen on the council to do their job in reporting what's going on in Highland Park. I know very well, but what I'd like to speak about, just for a brief moment, this Friday, May 24th and May 26th, is Puppy Day sales all around the country, not only here in Highland Park. Every state, every city, every post, the American Legion and the VFW will go all out in promoting Puppy Day sales. Just for a brief moment, a lot of people have asked me, well, where does all this money go that you people are collecting? Just as in, for a brief moment, we donate all this money to help every veteran's cause. And I'll give you a couple that are very close to me. The DAV, Disabled American Veterans, and the Wounded Warriors, which is well-known, I think, to everyone in this room, everyone watching television. All this money collected around the country goes to veterans' causes. Now, May 24th and 26th, my commander, William Young, and Bobby Porter have sat down with the management of Stop &amp; Shop. I'll be there with other veterans this Friday and Sunday. I cannot be there on Saturday, because Saturday is a high holy day in the Jewish religion, known as Shabbos, and I won't be there. And no one, no one else will be there either. And just for a moment, that no one in this room ever forgets, and I've asked everyone before, and I'll ask, and I'll say this again, support your doctors and your nurses. These doctors and nurses, they joined us on a firefight, and that is the truth. And I have my commander right here that would support what I'm saying. Support your doctors and your nurses. They're the backbone of the United States of America. And as I said before, freedom is not free, and don't you ever forget that.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you, but before I, before I sit down, I would like to introduce my commander, William Young, Commander, Commander. And Commander Bobby Porter, they have a few words to say also. Thank you.
No words tonight, just please come to the parade, you can speak to us there.
Yes, great.
We'll be, we'll be there, so.
Great.
Especially in Highland Park.
Yeah, thank you.
I think you'll hear something that's been waiting for.
I have one quick thing to say. Bill Young is going to be our grand marshal.
Oh, congratulations.
And residents right here in town. Also, on Thursday at 11 o'clock, Bill and I, we're going to be on WCTC, being interviewed and talking about Memorial Day.
Fantastic.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you.
Hi, Lois Leving, North Second Avenue. When you have your diversity group and anyone else, have you found your ADA coordinator yet?
ADA coordinator for which?
For the access board. If Gary, did Gary step down as coordinator?
Gary is still technically the ADA coordinator. When he retires, we'll be filling that spot.
Okay, well, you might look at the transition plan, which really was passed contrary to minutes in April 2009, when then-coordinator Scott said there were two transition plans and neither were passed, which is not true. But Page Four talks about examples of Main Street Title III, Title II as ownership for the Borough, and all the buildings here in town that passed the deadline to be accessible to our veterans and our seniors and others, just a federal mandate. What I wanted to mention in my two minutes remaining is for those of us who were here 20 years ago, listening to the Buckwoods Ravine Planning Board discussions, we remember, I remember, over 2,000 tandem truckloads of fill will be required for those eloquent speakers who want a spread-out area instead of a high-rise. That's going to be forever hours and hours and days and days of tandem truck fill. It becomes a gated community when you put your retaining walls around there, I mean, you force it into a gated community instead of having an exit, perhaps up to South Seventh or whichever it is, South, yeah, I guess Seventh. Dr. Anne Barron used to talk about the geological features that now it becomes a gated community with one entrance in and out. I have a 1999 letter that asked if Graham Street between South Fifth and Sixth was ever vacated, which might give an exit. Anyhow, that was part of the questioning for the 1998-99 planning. And remember, please, I have a document from when the Brody House was being torn down on the corner of North Adelaide, that there is a known, New Jersey-known contaminated site less than 300 feet from the Buckwoods Ravine edge. So whatever is built there, those new residents have to be warned, as the people on South Seventh should be warned, that they are near a contaminated site between, it is the Valentine and Donaldson Streets, but over, over in that section, I think we call it the bike path, the lower level there. So that's a contaminated site. And glad to hear about the Raritan Shuttle. Oh, the transition plan, yes, okay, I mentioned that, very important. I worked at a house, we did an estate in Princeton that recycles food. In addition to recycling that we should do more of here, will that ever be picked up by Middlesex County?
So I'm going to ask Councilman George to answer that question, however, I need to let you know that your time is up. But you can come back later to finish.
I'm sorry, what specifically are we speaking about?
Food recycling. There are towns, Lawrenceville, Princeton have containers, like a garbage can, but it's food recycling, so that doesn't go underground, become methane, somehow is composted or something.
The county has discussed on a number of times, originally it was coming up in terms of composting, and I had discussed that with some of the members of the Lower Raritan Waterset as well. I've heard, and I haven't had a chance to speak to the coordinators there, that they are talking about that as the food waste problem becomes more and more, is discussed more and more, and also the ability, as Councilman Hale has talked about, expiration dates don't really mean that you have to throw anything away. I can get more further details from the county on that, because they are discussing it.
Okay, and we have time, right? Okay, good. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name's John Marin, I live at 232 Voguerd Street. I'm Vice Chair of the Highland Park Art Commission, I'm on the board of Main Street, I was also the co-founder of the Highland Park Artists Collective. I want to thank the whole council for being very pro arts these last few years, especially Councilwoman Elsie Foster-Dublin, Kim, and Phil George also was a liaison to the Arts Commission briefly. And Susie Welkowitz has been a great pro arts person as a liaison to Main Street. And also I want to do a shout out to Allison Baldwin, who's leading the Access Granted Program, and we hope to work with Universal Access and all the disabled people in town. And Amy Pollak, I want to, she's the sculptor, will have a beautiful bench in front of the Lafayette School, which is now called what?
Lafayette.
Lafayette Building, okay. I'm just filling in, backfilling. Also, I also want to thank the Councilwoman Welkowitz, because 30 years ago, I lived at the corner of Voguerd and Benner, and I lost two cats the first year I lived here. And so I came to the police station asking for signs, and in the last three or four months, I have a turning sign, and just this week, I've got the pedestrian crossing sign, which will make Voguerd Street much more safe. Thank you very much.
And that's also Lieutenant Panacella, and a couple of years ago, I remember he had the curb painted, that neon.
Yes, no.
Orange.
The yellow curb.
And also the stripes in the middle.
And the center divider has made, I've personally thanked him, but I've mediated many accidents there in the last 30 years, so thank you for putting that in place. I just want to say that the Highland Park Arts Commission, and I don't want to overuse my time, but I thank you for allowing me to talk in the pre-conference meeting. We've done 40 programs, and we've served, by my count, 11,920 people in the last two years, and we want to continue the generous budget funding, and I thank Terry Hovier for helping us find $1,500 more, and we've written two grants for $2,000 for a Mule Project and $2,000 for the Access Granted. But because we've done a lot of programming, like 20 times more than any previous art commission, I would hope that everyone would be sympathetic to helping us find other sources of revenue, and the mayor's assured me, and Matt Hale also. I just want to say that the city of Berlin's art funding is more than the entire United States National Endowment for the Arts and every single state in the United States arts budget. So, I mean, we're not Europeans, it's a different economy of scale, but I lived in San Francisco for many years, and Dianne Feinstein was one of my promoters. Am I getting close to my three minutes?
You are.
I'm done. So, I don't want to compare us to Portland or San Francisco, but the reason that we've done 40 programs and 20 times more than the other art commission, because we have people like Amy Pollak, Pandora Scooter, Stephanie, Phil George, and Elsie helping us out, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, John. And please give our gratitude and thanks to the entire Arts Commission. Okay, this is the last person, so there will be another session afterwards.
Okay, I'm Irene Rigner, I live on South Adelaide. I'm with Sustainable Highland Park, and I'm here actually, okay, I was involved in the environmental posters that went up, Yes We Can posters, and I'm here just to thank the Borough for the opportunity, under paid park partners, to participate in this. And I also want to thank the Arts Commission.
Yeah.
Their advice and their publicity was invaluable for getting, for me. And I want to thank John for Windows Art Gallery, the Raid Aid Art Gallery, where most of our posters are.
Irene almost single-handedly put together that whole world.
That's fantastic.
And they're still in the Raid Aid Windows, I want to go look at them.
Yeah.
Yes, they're on Fourth Avenue, if you'd like to see them. I love them, they're all different styles, they say different things, and I like that combination. So I want to thank you for that opportunity, and just to say, you know, I agree that the arts are extraneous. They aren't. They really are an integral part of our life. They have the possibility to bring people together, and in today's world, I think we need much more of that, and we could use the arts to have people come together, to create art together in the community. So, thank you.
Irene, I want you to know that I and the entire council are very committed to public art. We talked about this a little bit with John before in the conference, in the agenda portion of the meeting. To me, the opportunity for all our residents, no matter their economic background, to participate in the arts is crucial. I just had a fundraiser at my house for the Hub City Opera folks, and they are a group of volunteers that bring opera to all people. So I think this is something that's really important, and we must continue to find ways to bring all forms of art to the public. So thank you for everything you do, all of you. Okay, we're going to move on now to the next part of our meeting. Okay, Clerk, could you please report on advertising the overlay zoning ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park and Middlesex County creating a multifamily residential overlay zone was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, I'm going to call for a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title, after which I'm going to ask the Borough Attorney to speak a bit to this. So first, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Borough Attorney, would you like to address us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The overlay ordinance pertains to the Buckwoods property. The ordinance was introduced a month ago, and a public hearing was scheduled for this evening. Since the ordinance was introduced, we've had several mediation sessions with our special master in our Mount Laurel lawsuit. In fact, we have another one this coming Thursday. The purpose of that was to refine and revise the ordinance so that the issues that were raised many times by the residents of this community were addressed. I can assure you, for example, the ordinance will not permit a gated community. It will not be a gated community, as was proposed 20 years ago and defeated. So right now, we are meeting with the folks that own Buckwoods, and we're also meeting with our planner, and we're also meeting with the mediator, who has been appointed by Judge McCluskey, and we're working on final revisions to the ordinance. That ordinance is scheduled to be completed and considered by this council for introduction, that is, the new ordinance, at the meeting on June the 11th. And the final public hearing on that ordinance would be scheduled for Tuesday, July the 2nd. And at that time, we would present that ordinance, if it is adopted, to Judge McCluskey as a part of our Affordable Housing Compliance Plan, which will be presented at a compliance hearing on July 14th. So that's the current schedule for wrapping up the overlay zoning ordinance for Buckwoods. The ordinance does, if you read the ordinance and you want to comment this evening, which you'll be given an opportunity to do so, does provide for the construction, an alternate form of construction, the underlying residential zoning, which would allow putting individual houses on small 5,000-square-foot lots across the property, is not being repealed. That will still remain. What is happening is, the overlay ordinance will give an alternative way to develop the property that would allow for the construction of not more than 75 multifamily units of housing. And of the 75, if there are, if there are ownership units, 20% of them, or 15, would be affordable housing, the rest would be market-rate housing, and if it's rental housing, 15% of those units would be rented to persons of low and moderate income housing. That's how they become a part of our Affordable Housing Compliance Plan. The plan is also to have the units assembled in two buildings, neither Neither building can have more than 40 units, and those buildings would be located closest to where Sixth Avenue currently terminates. That's the general plan that is not going to change when the new ordinance is proposed on June the 11th. But there are a lot of details that have to be worked out in terms of the coverage, in terms of trying to prevent or preserve some of the property, to the rear of the property, I'll call it, going towards the river. And those are the details that are being worked on right now as part of the overlay ordinance. So, with that introduction or explanation, certainly, the council will proceed with the hearing tonight. But at the end of the hearing, I would suggest someone entertain a motion to table the vote tonight and continue the hearing until July the 2nd. We did that with the other Buckwoods ordinance, which was introduced. So, on the evening of July the 2nd, the ordinance, the new ordinance, can be considered for adoption, and the other ordinances, which are no longer valid, would be defeated. And that would be procedurally where we are.
Thank you. Now, I'm opening the floor for public hearing on this particular ordinance.
Good evening, Kalidra Hadhazy, South Second Avenue. I just have a couple of follow-up questions from the Borough Council's report that you just gave. The hearing on July 2nd, that is the final hearing on this matter, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Leading up to that, can residents put in writing their thoughts and considerations to what's existing, or will there be a new ordinance entirely that comes out that we will be able to read and make comments?
There will be a new ordinance, which the council will consider for adoption on June 11th.
Okay.
That ordinance is being worked on right now. As soon as it's done, it'll be posted, and you can certainly comment on that ordinance.
Okay. And will that be dramatically different than what we see, or can we expect it to be kind of similar?
Very similar.
Very similar. At what point can any of the residents, or do any of the residents have any other recourse in terms of their suggestions and thoughts on this ordinance and having that be made a part of the ordinance?
Well, you'll see the ordinance, which will be considered for introduction on the 11th. I think the best way to proceed, if you have comments after you see the ordinance, and we're going to try to post it as quickly as we can, you can certainly send those comments into the Clerk. But it would be also very important to attend the meeting on the 11th, to make sure you have the right ordinance, and to come back in particular on July 2nd and enter your testimony into the record. But if you want to comment ahead of time, which is wonderful, you can submit those comments to the Clerk.
Okay. And participating in the planning board meetings, does that have any effect on this ordinance?
No. The planning board process will be in addition to what the governing body will do. So, the ordinance that will be considered for introduction, assuming it's introduced on the 11th of June, will be referred to the planning board, and they will take that up at a public hearing. You can attend that public hearing. You can make comments and send your comments to the planning board at that time. And then, the matter would come back to the council for a final hearing on July 2nd.
Okay. And my last question, just to get clarity, so the existing zoning is for single-family housing, and that zoning has not changed, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, the overlay, as you were saying, is just an alternate plan?
It's an alternate way to develop the property, yes.
So, in essence, the developer can choose either one?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hello, Maureen Wallniak, 416 South Seventh Avenue. I just have a question, which is, when it comes to the discussions with the judge and the mediator, is there an opportunity for our voices to be heard in those conversations?
Well, not with the mediator. That has been appointed between the parties. So, when we meet with the court master, that's a meeting between representatives of the borough and representatives of the developer, with the mediator running those meetings. So, those are his meetings. We can't invite you to those meetings. But when the matter goes to court, whenever there is a status conference, or in particular, when there's a compliance hearing on the 14th of July, you are certainly welcome to come, and you would be given an opportunity to testify if you wanted to do that.
Now, how would we know where that's being held, and like what courthouse?
Sure.
What time?
We will post that information on the website.
The Borough website?
Borough website. And it would be in Middlesex County, Middlesex County Courthouse, on Friday, I think it is, July the 14th, at 9:30 in the morning. But we will give you the specifics for Judge McCluskey's chambers, where he is, how you find him, and we'll certainly invite you to attend.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
And I'd just add, if you reach out to me, if you get confused, or if you're not sure, you can always reach out to me directly, and I know a number of you have my contacts. So, if we're getting closer and it's not clear, just reach out, and I'll help clarify.
Also, Ed, could you clarify, in those meetings with the mediator, who are the representatives of the borough and the developer that are actually there?
Well, the representatives of the borough would be me as the Borough Attorney, the Attorney for the Planning Board attends those meetings, one or both of our planning consultants, who are working for the borough, and our special counsel for Affordable Housing, Mike Edwards. For the developer, they're represented by their attorney. They also bring along their professional planner, and also, an internal person who works on designing the types of buildings that they may want to build under the overlay on their property. And all of that is overseen by a professional planner called Michael Bolan, B-O-L-A-N, who is the court-appointed special master, who reports to Judge McCluskey on a weekly basis.
Thank you.
Yes, Steve Busby, 401 South Second Avenue. About 19 years ago, the Borough Council passed a series of ordinances about environmental protection, including steep slopes protection, stream corridor protection, all of which apply to this site. Does the special master just overrules that zoning?
No, 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 not at all, no. All of the land use regulations, except those which are being changed in this three-page ordinance about what you can build on the property, will remain in effect. Okay, so he can't overrule any of that. He wouldn't overrule that. He's a professional planner, so I think he understands that. But he's not overruling any of those requirements or the regulations. If anything, he's tailoring them or to make sure that they work appropriately on this property.
But my understanding is, the current landscape of that property, and where those proposed buildings are shown, those are all steep slopes. They are all considered unbuildable under our current ordinance.
Yeah, that's correct. So, for a certain portion of the property, the steep slopes ordinance, as particularly written in this, in the code, will be adhered to as you move from Sixth Avenue to the rear of the property. Some of the front part of the property might have to be adjusted based upon what the special master directs, in terms of having some retaining walls put up, maybe pushed close to the edge, closer to the buildings, and so that the buildings can physically be constructed. So, that may be a part of what he'll recommend as a part of the overlay ordinance for this particular property. But for the most part, the rest of it will remain the same.
I would just like to comment, I'm an architect by profession. You can build a building on a steep slope. It's not hard. You just have to do proper foundation preparation. It's more expensive. But the town, I would think it would be in our interest to make it, frankly, more difficult for the builder to do this, because if we don't, I mean, my sense is, a lot of this community doesn't want this development. And both the stream corridor protection and the steep slopes were written into the ordinance in part to make it hard to develop these kinds of environmentally sensitive properties. And if we're just going to waive all that, it seems like we're just throwing up our hands and saying, oh, well.
So, are we waiving it, or are the courts telling us?
Well, we're not waiving all that. I think you will see that when the ordinance is produced, the ordinance will be accompanied by a concept plan and also a landscape plan, okay? That's going to be a part of the ordinance, which will be made available to you. I think you will see, although it's still a work in progress, that where the buildings are located, or proposed to be located, closest to the end of the terminus of Sixth Avenue, that if the slopes, and that's basically the gentlest slopes on the property. They come in like this, they get much deeper to the rear. So, what we're trying to do is preserve as much of the rear of the property from further disturbance. It's been stripped, we know that, for environmental cleanup purposes, okay? But in terms of reforestation or replanning that area, we want to try to do that and preserve some areas back there, so you can have a trail and walk through there and get down to the meadows. But you will see, and you can certainly have your own opinion when you read the ordinance, whether or not we've done a decent job in preserving as much of the steep slopes as possible. And that'll be your call.
Okay, can I have one more thing, and I'll step aside. Was any consideration given to doing a more dense building at the very bottom, where it starts to level out towards the park? Doing something that was more dense with access from, say, Valentine, or down at the very bottom, at the bottom of Fifth, into a parking area that would then allow the entirety of the current, much more topographically difficult area, to be left alone? And build a building that overlooks the park, that doesn't interfere with all the houses that currently back up to that lot, that they can then have a view, they could build a six-story building, you wouldn't see it from anywhere in the area, that that building would be able to offer views across the river and at the park, and it would actually avoid developing the steep slopes?
I must say candidly, you're the first speaker that ever mentioned a six-story building on Buckwoods.
At the bottom of the hill, you wouldn't see it.
I understand. But I guess, in the years we've been dealing with this, and trying to talk with residents on both sides of the property, the objective has always been to try to minimize the height of the building, but still accomplish what we have to accomplish. So, the answer is yes. I think that was looked at some time ago. There was some concern expressed about going that deep into the property and rather keep it towards Sixth Avenue. And there certainly was a lot of concern, and I saw a lot of signs as I drove in tonight, as I did every meeting I come to, about, a concern about the height of the building. So, if you're going to take 75 units and put them in a building, you're going to be six, seven, or eight stories high. And I understand, you can probably put it towards the back part, where you can hide four of those stories, but you're still going to see four of those stories. And that's kind of been the direction a majority of the speakers on this issue have not encouraged us to go.
Okay, I just, I mean, I personally, I would rather see it all left undeveloped. But if we're forced to accept development, it seems to me, less coverage by a more dense building that's further away from public view, that's not really that noticeable. I mean, literally, if you stand at Sixth Avenue, where it terminates right now at Buckwoods, and you build a six-story building at the very bottom, down by the end of Fifth, you're not going to see it. It's going to be completely invisible. It's going to be, it's behind the trees, and it'll be down, well down slope. That slope from Fifth Avenue slopes probably 90 feet, roughly, from here down to the end of Fifth. You know, that's, that means the building that's down there at the bottom of the hill wouldn't even stick up into the view plane of anybody who's living in that area. I just think that's something that should be looked at.
So, Steve, just historically, you know, I'm a girl from Brooklyn, so I, you know, I like the taller buildings. However, the, over the last five years, we've had community meetings with people who live in the area. And as the attorney said, the direction that we got at these meetings was always to keep it as low as possible. So, that's how we wound up with this.
But I think topography makes, has an issue, has an effect. If you have a situation like this-
Can I also, may I comment on something?
Go ahead.
One other thing, Steve, actually, when I first came on council about eight years ago, we were in litigation with American Properties and, what is it called, the crossings on River Road? Is that the one? Pulte I and Pulte II.
Right.
And one of the things that I did, that I did suggest, right? We talked about this at length, was why not a lovely building, like in Bugalo Park, and 10 acres of parkland around that the entire neighborhood could use? Well, guess what? No developer wants to build that here in Highland Park. They can build it in New Brunswick, where they get tax credit for it, because it's an urban community, but we don't have that. They're not eligible for that here in Highland Park. So, that was what I heard, that developers just want to build their prototype stack housing, which is the same model that this developer has over on Stelton Road and everywhere else that he builds.
But then, you've got someone to do something a little more dense on the current, the Glasgow site. I mean, that's a fairly dense piece of housing. I don't know why that wouldn't be an approach to take here. Anyway, I'll stop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Hi, Kalidra, South Second Avenue. I have a question, just related to, my mother wants to repair her fence, and there's a tree that is not on her property, that is on the Buckwoods property, that would have to move in order for her to repair this fence because of the way that the tree is growing currently into her current fence. And she asked me to ask tonight what to do about that. Does she need a permit to remove that tree, or permission from the developer to move that tree, to put up her new fence?
So, I'm going to ask the Borough Administrator to-
I guess the question I would ask is, is the tree on her property?
The tree's on his property.
But is the branch hanging over?
Over her property.
You might want to check in with code enforcement to just double-check this, but my understanding is, if a branch is, you can, you're allowed to remove a branch that's in your property.
I don't, I think it's a little, it's a little more dense than a branch. I think it's like part of, like, the trunk is like, just, the trunk is growing, yeah.
Right, I mean, most of it is on Buckwoods property, but starting to encroach onto-
And it's right where you want to-
And I think it's going into the fence.
Yeah, she wants to, into the fence. So, she wants to get a new fence and take out part of that tree, but she doesn't know what to do, and she's kind of freaked out about doing anything.
I think I would refer you to Scott Brusher in our code office, because I just don't want to steer you wrong, and certainly, but I know, like, I've had personal experience where, you know, someone lopped off my plant that was growing in their yard, and, but this sounds a little more extreme, so, yeah.
Well, yes. Just given the sensitivity around all of this, she doesn't know what to do.
Sure. I would refer you to him, and then we'll figure a way through.
Thank you.
Hi, Pam Dorman, 423 South Fifth Avenue.
The mic is working. I just am very proud of that. Nobody wants to talk to it.
I was trying. There you go. So, this ordinance, you had said, is going to talk about two buildings? Is that correct?
Yes, the ordinance envisions two buildings nearest to Sixth Avenue.
Okay. But as you said, you've seen a number of signs where people really wish that it would not be as high as it is, and I wondered if there's any consideration of making it four buildings. So, you'd lap off the top and put it into another building?
Well, again, I think, as the mayor indicated, we've been talking with, I think, the community, hopefully, and we've had over in the community centers some gatherings. And we were of the impression that a majority of the folks, if there's going to be rezoning of Buckwoods, which unfortunately there has to be because of the law, that they would prefer to concentrate the development into two buildings closest to Sixth Avenue, and to try to not disturb as much of the rear part of the property as possible. So, the ordinance, the current ordinance tonight, if you were to take a look at that, would be two buildings that would be next to one another, with parking, for the most part, underneath, and no building, total of 75, no building can have more than 40. I guess you could do 40 and 35, or some mixture there. But that design has been followed and recommended by our professional planning staff, because they've listened to the material and the information we've gathered, really, over the last five years. And that was the preference that we thought that would be best for the community. And so, that's the, that's the plan that's trying to be implemented now. I think if we went back to the master, having talked about these two buildings, initially, the owner did not want to have two buildings. Initially, the owner wanted to ring the entire property around the steep slopes with townhouses. And where this gentleman suggested that we put the six-story apartment building, he wanted to put a three- or four-story apartment building there, with townhouses around the entire perimeter of the property. And our position was that the coverage was much too great, the intensity of development was much too great, the damage to the property was much too great, and we wanted to try to concentrate the development in a certain part of the property and not really disturb the entire property. So, that's kind of the direction we've been following with this court-appointed master for the last eight months.
And can I, let me just ask, if we were to go further back by adding two more buildings, would that infringe on the steep slopes in that area?
Well, not if you just drove them back. In other words, if you drove into the- In other words, if you drove into the property where we envisioned people coming in and having the two buildings right next to each other with the parking underneath. But if you took those buildings and lopped off the top of them and pushed them back, no, it wouldn't interfere anymore with the steep slopes. And we might have to adjust a little bit more going back, but not significantly.
And we're talking, the current buildings are three and a half stories high?
I think they're three and a half to four stories. I haven't seen the final ordinance, because I haven't seen the final ordinance. But that'll be clearly set forth in the ordinance.
So the height of those buildings is going to be higher than the yards of the people who live on Fifth and on Seventh? So that was, that was part of the concern. I was at many of those initial meetings. And the idea was to not disturb as mu, to try to not disturb very much of the grounds. But part of it was because it wasn't everybody's yards, you know, right behind the yards. But, anyway, I understand it's not a possibility that, you know, if it was pushed toward the back of the property, then it wouldn't be infringing on anybody's residences, so.
Well, a couple of comments. One of the design discussions that's going on is, down the middle of the property, you know where the ravine comes down? There is a stormwater pipe that takes water from Sixth and shoots it out the back. One of the discussions is that the developer, if they do the 75-unit plan, will remove that pipe, relocate it around the perimeter of the property, and then drop the elevation there about a half a story. So that would shrink or drop the building, and the parking in particular, down. So that's what we're trying to do, to mitigate against having the buildings become too tall or too, you know, interfering with the neighbors. And that's a design thing we've brought to the table, and I think we can sell that. So we're making every effort to try to keep them as least visible as possible. And because they are in somewhat of a valley, and the houses on either side, as you know, are above that, you're not gonna see all four stories sticking out. You're gonna see partial, partial stick out, but not the whole thing.
Right, but there will be windows facing my house.
There would be windows, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Name is Jim, from South Seventh Avenue.
Jim, your last name?
Jim Lapidus.
Thank you.
So, you know, there's been a lot of talk, and first I'd just like to say that that comment by the gentleman, the architect, about that area, building on the extreme south side, was very interesting. Because, you know, looking at that area, it does, it really is the most buildable area, has no slopes on it at all. But anyway, just dovetailing to what you've been saying, how about, I don't remember me or many, any of my neighbors ever giving input that would indicate the plan that's being advocated. What I mean is that if you talk to any of my neighbors, any of the people in my neighborhood, the issues that are important to us are quality of life and property values. As well as pretty much everyone on the South Fifth, South Seventh, and South Sixth area. That's what we're concerned about. So that means the high-rise, the four-and-a-half-story building, would infect our quality of life and our property values.
So, Jim, I just wanna correct one thing, it's three and a half stories, right? I mean, not that it's still, it's still more than two.
I'm considering, I'm just considering the parking deck as a story. I know it's three and a half stories of living space.
Right.
Plus a parking deck. So I would like, you know, to clarify, you know, that it's, we're really talking four to four and a half stories with the parking deck. I mean, it might be, it might be better to talk about the height above grade, that might be a simpler way of saying it.
And that'll be reflected in the revised ordinance. So the answer is, I don't have the answer today, 'cause I haven't seen the ordinance, but that will be reflected clearly in the ordinance.
So, you know, what really I'm trying to get at is that the important issues to me and several of my neighbors, you know, is that we're concerned about the height of the building. We're concerned that there's adequate buffers between our property and any new construction. We're concerned about traffic and public safety. We're concerned about parking. These, I know that you have said many times, you know, that these are all things that are being studied, but it just seems important that we look at the plan and all these issues concurrently. You know, like, I don't, no one, I ever talked to you, said anything about open space when we were talking about what's going back there. If the whole thing was open space, great. But to make like a plan where it's just such a, you know, winners and losers, you know, these people get open space, these people get a four-and-a-half-story, three-and-a-half-story plus parking deck building, I just don't understand that. But what I'm, you know, if there is open space, you know, that's the next thing I just wanted to talk about, is we keep on talking about the building and what's gonna go on there, we're not even talking about the open space, like, so if the plan that you are advocating goes through, what is the open space gonna look like? To like, give a point of reference, I took a walk down to the meadows. I've walked there several times, many times. I wanted to go back recently, just to make sure. While I'm glad that it's not, you know, a parking lot or a high-rise building, you know, let's be honest, there's piles of concrete, piles of scrap metal, broken glass, bricks, mortar. You know, it's, it's, it is what it is. And for what it is, Buckwoods is even worse. You know, what is the open space gonna look like? Is it gonna be weeds growing around piles of trash? And we're gonna pat ourselves on the back that we're, you know, preserving nature? So, you know, if something, if there was a plan where it was, that blended into the neighborhood, two stories, just like the rest of all the other buildings, even if it had to go farther, if we had to sacrifice open space, I mean, we have a park, we have the meadows. I don't know what else, you know, what more to say, but all I'm asking is that there are other ways of looking at the property. Thank you.
Hi, I'll be brief, Maureen Woonley, 416 South Seventh Avenue. I just wanna second some of the things that Jim Lapidus said about all of the voices being heard. Specifically, I think I've been to two meetings regarding this whole topic in the years that I've lived in Highland Park since 2005. And that could be my own fault for not knowing what was going on, but it seemed like there were some voices that were a lot louder and higher representation and being involved very closely with this thing, whereas I didn't really know that this was happening. And to that end, to say that the residents are all behind, you know, preserving as much open space as possible, that was not my opinion there. My opinion is also with Jim to say, quality of life, property value. If there's a single-family home or a townhouse built behind my home that sells for $450,000, that's going to help me a lot. And that's going to help my neighbors a lot. So I just wanted to make sure that it's, you know, it's understood that the conversations that I'd heard so far, like, the first meeting that I went to, where I really had an opportunity to speak with you, mayor, and you also, administrator, was where I heard a lot of talk about what you had to bring to it, but I never had an understanding that, out of that meeting, that everyone was on the same page. Or what the actual approach was. And I just wanted to put that also, it really should be equitable impact for all of us. And the best compromise is nobody really walks away happy. Right?
So, so thank you for your statements. I want, I want to learn a little bit more, and maybe you can help me with this. I'm gonna ask the borough administrator, how, when we've had the meetings, how did we notify residents? And then maybe you can tell me if there's something different that we could do so that everybody gets the same message of when these meetings are occurring.
I have suggestions right now.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think I'm here to address that.
Can she finish talking first? She's at the microphone.
The most impactful for me were the direct mailings, especially for those that are bordering that property.
Okay.
Text messages?
So the letters you're talking about?
The letters, yeah. 'Cause I remember getting two. In, what are we now, 13 years?
Right. So, so do you recall how we, the other means that we used?
I'm not sure, and frankly, there were, I think we've been referring to meetings over a five-year period where predates me quite a bit. So I don't, I don't know exact, I'd have to, I just don't know. So, I mean, we used a mixed bag, I'll just, you know, of our toolkit.
It's very possible that one of the neighbors was coordinating meetings, but not reaching out to everyone. And in that regard, you've heard one voice.
Right.
And not all.
So we need to continue doing those mailings when we want to reach everybody? I think that's probably the best thing.
Email, text messages, those, if you wanna save some postage.
So, so that's another good thing, if we could get everybody's emails, because we can also use that for when we're nixle messaging. If we don't have your information, you're not getting announcements coming from the borough of important nature and that sort of thing. So, you know, Terry, if we can come up with a way to collect that information from all the neighbors, that would be great.
That's definitely easiest for me. Yeah, and newspapers, really, at this point, 2019, they're not effective to communicate to residents that it's been effectively communicated. No, it wasn't.
There is also an.
It was buried, for us.
There's also an online newspaper where we're starting to send things, called the Highland Park Planet? So that, you know, might make it easier for you to?
Again, for those bordering the property, it needs to be more direct communication. To ensure transparency.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, two things. One, I would like to.
Wait, wait, state your name and address.
Oh, sorry. Marion Safford, South Fifth Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay, so I wanna address some of their concerns, because I think I've been following this as closely as anybody can. I remember one meeting, and that was the meeting when the first tree permit was issued. That was the only meeting that has been called, that had been called before the second tree permit. At that meeting, we were presented with a plan for the two houses. That was in like September. And that was the only meeting, so there has not been any other meeting.
Well, there were, you know, I know five years ago, when I first got involved, there was a meeting and it started then. I don't know about the.
There were two meetings.
Two meetings.
But that, again, it wasn't, we haven't had meetings every six months for 13 years. But there was only, it was never, it was never input from the community. It was always, we have to do this because we're under court order. And it was presented as this is the least bad way to do this.
What was that, Susie?
No, it's the developer that dictates, you know, when they're ready to do something. It's not, you know, we're not, when the developer wants to move ahead with his project, he'll contact the court and then we will respond in light. But it's not up for us to dictate. Right, but it's been presented that somehow the neighbors had input and the neighbors chose this. And that's not the case. It was, in that, that meeting, we were presented with a plan, and this was considered the least bad plan. It was never saying coming, it was never coming, you know, do you want this plan or that plan, or?
So I'll ask the borough attorney. The plan, I believe, was developed after input from the community, not before, if I remember correctly.
Well, I recall at least one or maybe two community meetings over at the community center, probably three, four years ago, when the first rollout of the idea of the two buildings was sketched and discussed by the developer. And I recall.
Was a different planner also at the time, I thought.
We had a different planner working for us, but we had a meeting. I think it was pretty well-attended.
Right.
We had discussed the requirement to do something about developing Buckwoods for more intense development. And then, I mean, I've got them in my file, and they got a date on them, and I'll share them with you if you like. But they presented at that time, on illustration boards, a rendering of what two buildings would look like at a certain height, where basically we're putting them.
And was that when the developer was looking at 144 units?
Yes. Yeah, they were pushing for 144 units.
Yeah, that, that meeting I remember, but that's the only one.
And that's when we got our first input, where?
Well, that's when we called a community meeting, an informal meeting, to get input, right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, anyway, that's, okay, that's my recollection of things, and maybe I could take a look and see if there was a meeting that I have missed.
Yeah.
Okay, the other thing is that in the overlay zoning thing, it has some nice provisions for putting in trees and reforesting some of the area that has been uprooted. My question is, who's responsible for maintaining those trees once they're planted? I mean, planting trees on a steep slope is probably, I mean, keeping them alive is probably non-trivial. So the question is, who's responsible for it? And is provision for that in the ordinance?
Well, who's responsible for it would be the owner. If the developer develops the property, he would develop it, or they would develop it, either as condominiums for sale or an apartment complex, one or the other. If they sell them, they're gonna set up a master deed and a condominium association, which is responsible for the common elements. The common elements on this four-and-a-half-acre parcel would be the trees and everything else. If it's gonna be rented, they would set up a corporation to be the landlord, and that would be the group responsible. They would post bonds with the borough to make sure that the trees, when initially put in, survive. And then there's a maintenance period of time where they'd have to keep them there as well. Probably, I think it's two years after they get planted. So there is a requirement for that. And also, as a part of this new ordinance that's being developed, there's actually, I think I mentioned this, a landscape plan, which showed, should show you basically where the trees are gonna go.
No, that was nice. The only thing is, it's tricky to keep them alive in those circumstances.
Right.
Okay.
Hi, quick question, Lois Leving, North Second. Will this overlay zone set a precedent so that if there's ever a developer on the Lower Meadows, as we had a plan, 2013, I purchased a plan, and those are single-family homes, maybe, will that then allow a developer, or like Kaplan in the late 80s wanted to develop down there, then can it be four or 75 units or four or five stories?
So before you answer the precedent, Lower Meadows now has the solar field?
Yeah, that's borough property, if you're referring to the area that I think you're referring to.
Okay, so, or anywhere in the borough, or anywhere on this side, if there are single-family homes zoning, or if there is a zoning for single-family homes, will this set a precedent?
The answer is no.
Okay.
And it will ensure that it doesn't happen. If we go to court on the 14th of July and we get our affordable housing plan approved, then a developer could not sue us to try to do that. It's called a builder's remedy. We would be immune from those, at least through 2025, because we have a good plan. So we absolutely would not have to face it again.
Hayden Shung, South Fifth Avenue. First of all, I want to thank the mayor and members of the council to listen to our neighbors' concern regarding Buckwoods. This is a pretty contentious issue for us, and it's easy to fall into self-righteous mode, and I've been guilty of that in the past. So I, I, I'm thankful that you are listening to our concerns, and we would like to work with the council and the borough to develop a plan that works for our neighborhood. I second my neighbors' and Seventh Avenue's concern that our primary concerns are our quality of life, our property value, and how it affects the character of our neighborhood. So those are our, you know, the things that are very important to us. In terms of height restriction, we are concerned about the height because this thing is right in our backyard and like tower over our houses, right? So that's why I wanna keep it as low as possible. Now, this gentleman here, what's your name? I forgot. I forgot.
Steve.
Yeah, Steve brought a very interesting suggestion, that, that if, if you build a tall building at the, in the middle of nowhere, at the bottom of the woods, that doesn't tower anybody's houses, that could work as well. It doesn't have to be, and there's more than one way to skin the cat, so I do urge you to at least explore this possibility.
Thank you.
That's what I was saying, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Seeing no further public comment, Councilwoman Wilkowitz, are we looking at a motion to table?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to move to table this until July 2nd.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Definitely.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, can you report on the resolution to approve the amendments to the 2019 municipal butter, bu, bu, budget? I'm hungry, I haven't eaten yet. And water and sewer budget.
We're tabling that.
Okay. Can I have a motion to table this item?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, can you please report on introduction of the capital ordinance for installation of ADA ramp at 212 Raritan Avenue for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Capital ordinance providing for installation of an ADA-compliant entrance and ramp in and by the Borough of Highland Park in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $12,000 therefore to pay for the cost thereof, has been duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration on passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
About time, right? Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Yes.
Congratulations to everyone. May I have a resolution, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to approve the emergency temporary appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to table item number eighteen on the consent agenda? So moved?
Second.
Is this roll call?
Roll call?
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to separate item number twenty-one from the consent agenda? So moved?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt consent agenda items fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-two?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call? Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt item number twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Abstain.
Okay. I am appointing the following members of the Office of Emergency Management, Sergeant Jason Culver and Detective Theodore Pardo. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. We're going into our second public discussion period, so if anybody has anything they want to discuss, please feel free to step up to the microphone.
Maureen Woonley, Act 416, South Seventh Avenue. Really quickly, is it possible to see the affordable housing proposal for Highland Park?
Would you like to see the settlement agreement?
Is that what you-
Which has all the details in it.
Or how we're going to, how we're going to resolve the affordable housing?
Yes, it's called the settlement agreement, sure, well.
Is it available?
The fair share agreement from two years ago is also online, I believe.
It's online?
On the, on the website, yeah.
If it's not, we'll get it, we'll get it up and get it online. We have an agreement.
Let's let the boroughs-
Just to clarify, the fair share housing plan is currently on the website, which kind of enumerates kind of a lot of the calculations for how we are meeting our obligation and how we plan to meet it moving forward, and actually, I think I showed Hayden on today. That's currently on our website. I'll have to check to see if the settlement agreement is, and if it isn't, we'll figure out a way. And if certainly you want it more urgently, if you send me an email, I'll send it to you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your understanding on that.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Matthew Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue, and the last resident reminded me, because it's a field that I happen to work in, that all, that, you know, the state of New Jersey's affordable housing requirements are through litigation, unfortunately. Our legislature does not have a mechanism through which to enforce its, its affordable housing mandates through Mount Laurel I and II.